The recording has started.
Okay, perfect. Is everyone able to hear?
Yes.
Okay, so it is 2:01 PM and the chair will call the Lone Star College Board of Trustees meeting into order. Chair will do a roll call just to confirm quorum. So let's start with trustee Kane.
I'm here.
Trustee Stoma. Think he might be able to come in a little bit after trustee Sullivan. Trustee Pierce.
Present.
Trustee Ayers Wilson.
Here.
Trustee, okay, perfect. Trustee, good.
I'm here.
Trustee vote. Thought I saw him. He might be coming in later today. Trustee Maria.
Present.
Perfect. All right, we do have quorum. Perfect. So if y'all could do the pledge of allegiance. If I can stand up for me. Thank you so much. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. Dr. Head, do we have the proper meeting posted notice?
Yes, it's been posted in accordance with the law.
Okay, thank you, sir. We don't have anything for closed session for today. So let's let us move forward with the public comment.
Chair Saldivar, we have one person signed up today, and that is John Bergduff.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, ma'am.
John, you're able to speak now.
See there?
Okay, John, let's try that again.
Okay, there we go. Great. Thank you so much. I am Dr. John Bergduff, President of AFT Lone Star College, and I want to thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with all of you again today. This afternoon, I'd like to speak in favor of two action items on today's agenda. I will be brief, and I promise I won't run long. First, the AFT supports action item 27, adopting Davis Bacon prevailing wage rates through August 2022. I spoke about prevailing wages at length at the May meeting, so I will simply reiterate that this action item, if approved, will ensure competitive wages and benefits for construction workers on Lone Star projects, will promote apprenticeship programs that lead to productive careers for young workers, and will help guarantee quality work on projects on our campuses. It is a win for all concerned. AFT also supports action item 26, approving the Separation Incentive Plan, or SIP, that was presented to Lone Star employees earlier this year. Actually, I have to confess that I personally have mixed feelings about this action item. On the one hand, the SIP is a valuable opportunity for some members of the Lone Star team who are considering retiring or changing careers, and I'm excited that they will have this extra benefit as they start their new adventures. On the other hand, quite a few people have talked to me about this program, and I know that we are going to be saying goodbye to a number of talented and dedicated faculty, staff, and administrators who have worked for years, even decades, to build Lone Star College into the phenomenal place it is. I will miss them, and I know we all will. They are the giants upon whose shoulders the rest of us stand, and I hope we will always remember with gratitude how far we have come because of them. Since my comments so far have been brief, I want to take the last couple of minutes. I have a lot to do to do something none of us ever seem to have the time to do. Completely apart from the board's agenda here today, I would like to pause to recognize and thank a specific Lone Star employee for her contributions to our college. This employee is the model of grace under pressure. She works quietly, largely behind the scenes, and without fanfare to keep our system office running smoothly and to support you, the Board of Trustees, and the Chancellor in your important work. She has worked on more projects and initiatives than most of us will ever know about. I am speaking of our Lone Star College Chief of Staff Helen Clarity. Before the pandemic, when these meetings were in person, Helen always had a copy of the agenda printed out and ready for Alan Hall and me. She always checked with me to make sure I was ready to speak. She has always been gracious and welcoming to us, even when, in a different time that now seems long ago, the union was not exactly the group of folks that a certain former administration wanted to have around. Lone Star has changed for the better, and I believe that Helen's quiet strength, supportiveness, and professionalism, working out of the limelight, has played and is playing a significant role in making this a great college to be a part of. So today, I simply want to say thank you, Helen Clarity, for who you are and all you do. Thank you also, Dr. Head, members of the board, and everyone else here today for your kind attention. I wish you all the best for a great summer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John, so much. Those are really kind words. Yes, and we truly appreciate Helen. I don't think we would be here without her.
We've got a, before we end the meeting, we'll have a little we'll have her say a few words right at the end of the meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Helen. All right. Any introductions and special guests and recognitions?
Helen, do we have anybody?
Yeah, today we do not.
Okay.
Oh, we do. Sorry. So sorry. We, of course, we do.
Well, yeah, okay, I meant outside people, but yeah, I'll introduce. So today, we have joining us for the first time, I'm going to welcome Dr. Melissa Gonzalez, who's the new president over at Kingwood. And, you know, many of you already know Melissa, so we're really happy to have her over there. And I want to thank Mario Castillo for filling in for her over there in the interim. And then, secondly, I wanted to introduce Desiree Provesco, who is, will be, this is the last time I'll say this, Desiree, you're the new Helen. And so Desiree has, you all saw the note, I think, that she's worked, I think, over 15 years in our system. We know her really well. She is, I think the board's really going to like dealing with her, and she's very smart, very talented, got a great personality, and has a great work ethic. So welcome her. And you'll meet Desiree more once we get back into, and see her more once we get back into lifetime. So the next, the next part of this is on the workshop. I want to introduce Katie Caruso, who is our Associate Vice Chancellor. Katie, what we wanted to talk to you about today, remember the last meeting we had, we talked about some of the scholarship recipients, and you saw, I think, of all the things we do, and we do a lot of operational, and we just, we just do a lot of things, but at the root of what we're doing is about our students. And I cannot tell you how much these Jack Kent Cooke Scholarship Awards, what that does to, for our students and our faculty that worked with them and their parents. And Katie has been the leader with, we've got a number of people working on this to help these students. So I'm going to turn this over to Katie, and she's got a 10 or 12-minute presentation. I think you'll really find this worth your time. So Katie?
Yes. Thank you so much, Dr. Head. Thank you, Board of Trustees. It is a delight to speak to you today about our students. And so with the next slide, please. So if you, as you remember, as Dr. Head said, the Jack Kent Cooke Scholarship is the most prestigious transfer scholarship in the nation. It includes a one-year vetting process, and students who participated have to go through two different phases. This year, we had 15 of the 72 students who were selected from across the country. We could go to the next slide, please. So I'd like to take a moment to recognize our semifinalists from across the system. So again, I'll quote Dr. Head. He mentioned that when students go through this process and they apply to be a semifinalist, receiving this as a recognition is in itself a currency. And you're going to see tonight, from, you're going to hear from one of the students who was a semifinalist, who saw that come to fruition. But we are so delighted to recognize the students on this list who made semifinalist position. We could go to the next slide. I wanted you to get a sense of where we stand in the rest of Texas. So what you can see here, our students are really being quite when we're where we relationship to the rest of the state. 2012, we've had 26 students who've actually been finalists. Next, please. So here are our finalists, and we had five this year, which was, we can say, I was told to say it, I feel, I don't want to brag, but we have the top in the nation. So Lone Star College had more finalists than anyone else in the country this year. And these finalists will receive $40,000 for up to three years to receive their bachelor's degree. They will receive up to $70,000, and I'll give you a moment, $70,000 toward graduate school, as well as comprehensive mentorship and career guidance from their alumni network. Dr. Head, one of these students is a history minor, Rachel, with an education interest, so we may hire her. But from engineering, these students are going to Baylor, they're going to Rice. You're going to hear from them in a moment, much more important than hearing from me. But I also wanted to point out on the next slide how, you know, these, the Jack Kent Cooke Scholarship is a litmus for success, yes. But when the students are going through these high-impact programming, you know, most of these students are Phi Theta Kappa. Most of these students are Honors College every once in a while. That's not the case, but it's important for us to see that when they're going through these practices, whether they get Jack Kent Cooke or not, here are just two other success stories, students who did not make, who applied for JKC, did not get it, but guess what? They're getting full rides to Columbia and to Rice University through the programming that they have here. And if we go to the next slide. So I want to thank everyone on the committee who works to support these students. Not one person here has not mentored or written many recommendation letters. Thank you for everyone who served. And I wanted to point out, before you hear from the students, that these students are all paying, giving back and paying it forward. Students who are, we provide specialty training and workshops and even a portfolio class where students work on their applications. And guess what they do? All of them have a requirement, and they lovingly do it, to train the trainer and work with students to complete applications who are not in the Honors College, not in Phi Theta Kappa. And they work throughout the system, working with other students to help them with their applications, to give it back, and they also come back and support our students through mentorship. And with that, I am delighted to let you hear from the students themselves.
Before I start this video, I want to make sure you understand that at the bottom of your screen, you can increase the size of what you see, and then you can also control your audio.
Link, can you go back to the slide that shows who participated, who helped Katie with this? And for board, so Katie is the leader of this, but we have so many people involved helping these students in this. Link, I'm talking about the, yeah, there you go. Go back. There.
Is that the one, sir?
Yeah, right there. I don't really have any more. Katie, I don't know whether you have any more comments about this, but so there's a lot of people that work with our students and work together across the system over this. And Katie, any other comments about this?
Sure. Laura Dupree, Frank here, Frank Rodriguez, all of the honors directors whom I work closely with. They're all, they've all, you know, they, they know these students. They write letters for these students. They support these students, and they just do the good work that all of you allow us to do, to help these, these students have their dreams come true, as you heard on this video, and I can't thank them enough.
This is great stuff, and I know some of you, some of the board members have been involved with PTK and even honors before, and it just is. Every time I see presentations like this and hear those students and watch those parents, it's like, that's why we're here. All this other stuff is important, but that's why we're here, to help our students be successful. So thank you, Katie, for Katie just does a great job, whether it be with honors or the scholarships or international. She has large responsibilities. So thank you very much.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you, Catherine. You actually made me teary-eyed just a couple of minutes ago watching those videos.
Dr. Head will tease me, but it gets me every time. Thank you.
We're extremely, we're extremely proud of the students. I think it's, they did an awesome job, and obviously, thank you to all the professors and everyone who helped them. So thank you so much. Trustees, do you have any? Any comments?
I do. I am just so excited for our five finalists, our, was it 15, 17 semifinalists? And the fact that, excuse me, but we wiped the floor with the other Texas colleges. We blew it away and showed everybody what Lone Star College can do for and with our students. Good job, everyone.
There are so, there are so many people behind the scenes to thank too, and all of our campus administrators here. Thank you to everyone who made the call. Thank you. Very good presentation. Thank you, Catherine. Let's see. Let us move forward to the approval of the minutes. I hope everyone had the opportunity to review the minutes. May I have a motion in a second to approve the May, May 6 minutes?
Motion Sullivan.
Second. May I hear a second?
Second, good.
Okay, it's been properly motioned in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. All right. Special reports and announcements.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. I believe you need to call for approval of the minutes of the board budget retreat on May 21st.
Yes, I don't have it here, so sorry about that. May I have a motion in a second to approve the board retreat?
Motion Sullivan.
Second, good.
All right. It has been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, trustee. Good.
You're welcome.
Okay, special reports and announcements.
Sure. Madam Chair, I just want to make sure you knew, I believe everybody has arrived. I see a couple of people have just come in on my screen anyway, so I believe we have everyone in attendance today just for our records. So I've got a couple of short updates, but on the state budget, and I sent some notes out about this. We were, you know, we had been budgeting for zero, and I sent you a note about this, but I just wanted to repeat that we did exceptionally well in the session this time, and we worked very hard to make sure that we did, we received what I think is our fair share of the appropriation. So this was a pretty lean year for community colleges, but we received $9 million for the biennium, $9 million over a two-year period, about four and a half a year. We were expecting zero. We thought we might even be cut. And keep in mind that that was the original proposal that would cut us. So we actually received the second highest allocation among community colleges. It was due to our growth and the way they do the formulas, and that's what we were, we were advocating for. We did not want to change in that formula without more discussion. So, and we'll continue that. Our, our work doesn't stop here. It picks up immediately to make sure that we get, whatever the formula is, we'd like to know and get rewarded on results. That's what we're interested in, especially student metrics. So that puts us in a, that roughly four and a half million is roughly one percentage point of our budget, but that, that helps a lot for us. On the summer and fall enrollments, which are really a very critical piece of what we do, so for the summer, we're we're actually, well, we have an increase of 1% in headcount, and we're actually down in credit hours. I'm not so concerned about that as I am the fall, and right now, we're up almost 18% with students, and credit hours, we're up 10 and a half percent. We have a long way to go, though. We've got a couple of months, maybe three months, I believe, before the school starts again, so we'll be keeping tabs on that. But keep in mind that this time last year, we were looking at 30 and 35% decreases in enrollment. So compared to last year, we're in a lot better shape, and we're, we're going to monitor that. We also have, just while I'm on this topic, remember that we have another, the final budget review coming up, and we were waiting on that. That comes up on June the 24th, and we'll send out more messages over this, the final retreat, and that once we see which way the enrollments are going, and well, I think we'll have a pretty good idea, then we can finalize our budget projections for next year. The SACS is the Southern Association of colleges and schools, but we had our preliminary review. Remember that they're coming in in October, and you're going to be receiving a book. I just wanted you to see the work that goes into this. The book is actually 350 pages long, and that's the kind of work that goes into these accreditation visits, and these are really, really important to us. This is, they actually come and visit every 10 years, or if you make a major change, like Houston North, are adding the bachelor's degrees. So, so we have to go through each of the requirements for accreditation, just like you would in any major company or certification or medical facility, any. So the results were very positive, the preliminary review. We worked really hard on this. I want to thank Dr. Dwight Smith and Valerie Jones and their staff. There are a lot of people. I think there are hundreds of people working on this SACS review, and I think we're going to be fine over this. I don't look at this as adversarial. There are guidelines. We need to operate under the guidelines, and so what they do is they'll come in, and if they think we're not operating within the guidelines, it's kind of an instructional student services audit, that kind of a, and the board is included in this. They'll, they'll be interviewing some of the board members, and they did this past week. On the bachelor's degrees, so far, so good over that. So we were not asking for any specific bachelor's degree. What we were asking for, there were a group of us, community colleges, asking for approval to add two more if we chose to. In other words, their limit was three. We wanted to move that up to five. And we, you know, I testified on this before the legislature, I don't know, six weeks ago or so, and it was very positive, because we can show the results. I think I told you that we had 200 and a little over 200 openings, and we had 2,200 applications for that. So, and the pay is between $75,000 and $95,000 a year for these workforce programs. So we want to continue on that, and tonight, one of our board agenda items is approving emergency management. It's an associate's degree, but that's going to lead into a bachelor's degree that, we're waiting on the governor to sign it, so it passed the legislature, and we're waiting on the governor to sign that, and Senator Brandon Creighton, who is from our area, presented that bill in the Senate, Senate Bill 1300. And then on the, we are, we are participating in the federal vaccination program. So we were, a couple of people from Washington reached out to me, I don't know, about three weeks ago or so, and asked if we, the Department of Ed had contacted AA, AACC, the American Association of Community Colleges, and then the American Association, American Association of College Trustees, AACC, or ACCT, and asked if we would take the lead in providing vaccinations. Now, we don't do And we don't do it ourselves, but we partner with different pharmacies and, and actually HEBs and some medical facilities. What they wanted us to do was to provide the location and handle the marketing, which we're doing. So, thank you to the leadership, Dr. Blenson at North Harris and Dr. Wright at Houston North. Those are the two locations. It's not only for our students, but it's for the entire community. And I don't know whether you saw this morning, I saw the, the president is really pushing. There's a big push federally to get as many people vaccinated as we possibly can. But that's the program that we're participating in. So, we will, you'll see some marketing coming from us. Some of it will be directed to our students, but a lot of it's just directed to the community. And so, we're going to help without however we can. And then the last is, if you've not seen this, and we will share it with you. Helen, can you, or Link, can you blow that up a little bit?
I cannot, sir, but every screen I should be able to expand. There's a little plus and minus on it.
Okay, I can, I mean, I can do it here. I just wanted to point out to you that we were recognized in the, I received a call yesterday about this Hispanic Outlook Higher Education Magazine, and where we were recognized now. So, we have the largest Hispanic population among community colleges in the country. This is pretty amazing to me. That's, I was called, and they said, is this right? I said, yes, it is. So, just keep in mind, it's more of a reflection of the demographics in our area and the changing demographics. But we've been at the top of this list for the last couple of years. So, you'll, you'll hear more about our enrollments and how we're targeting as we look at marketing going forward. And I believe that's all I have in my presentation, so.
Thank you, Dr. Head. Trustees, do you guys have any comments?
Sullivan?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I just want to take a minute to piggyback on Dr. Head's announcements with respect to new president at Kingwood. The Kingwood campus, want to thank Mario Castillo for stepping in as the interim president. And from all indications, doing a great job and probably learning a lot of things about campuses and students and faculty that he hadn't had a chance to do before. So, a good opportunity for him professionally, but he did do a good job for us. So, thank you, Mario. And then to Dr. Melissa Gonzalez, welcome aboard. She comes with an incredible resume. She, of course, has history with Lone Star College. And we're just very fortunate to have her. As soon as Dr. Head issued the press release announcing her appointment, I forwarded it to the local officials within the Kingwood District, if you will, District Eight. And also with, like, the officials, business leaders, and others in the Kingwood Campus service area. And the response was positive. And look forward to Dr. Melissa Gonzalez doing great things for Kingwood and the Kingwood Campus that is.
Well, I understand. He called and said he's going to be a little late.
Say that again, understand, we all missed it.
I'm sorry. I'm talking to my grandson.
We do our best. So, anyway, Dr. Gonzalez, if you can hear this, we do look forward to working with you in the future and staying with us for a long time and making the Kingwood Campus even greater than it is. Thank you, Dr. Head, and thank you, Chair Sullivan.
Thank you, trustee Sullivan. Do we have any other board members who would like to comment? Or have you been anywhere that would you like to share with us? Okay. If not, let us move forward with the consideration of the consent agenda. I know there's some items that we are pulling aside for, to consider separately. So, that you bear with me, because there are a couple of items there that I have to, we have to pull out. Let's see. We are going to consider separately item number five. And then we have item number six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, which is all the same in terms of considering them the same. But I, I don't know if we could consider one item. Or have we, I guess, my question is.
Madam Chair, I think, that's my, I think we want to go to sixteen. I think we want to take a look. These are all about the same. And, and so, items six through sixteen. And we wanted, for the rest of you, we, we wanted to answer a few financial questions around this.
Okay, so six through sixteen then, not twelve.
Consider them as a, as a cluster.
Okay.
Playing on all of them.
Okay, so then would be six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen would be considered separately as a cluster?
Yes, right.
Okay, got it. Item number nineteen. Item number twenty-six, twenty-seven. Please note that item number twenty-eight will be omitted or withdrawn. Item number twenty-nine and thirty would be considered separately. So, let me see if I got this correct. May I get a motion in a second to approve items?
Madam Chair, could I add an item, please? I apologize for interrupting. Thank you, Mike Sullivan. If we could also pull item twenty-one, just for a couple of brief questions, please. Thank you.
Okay. Item number twenty-one will be pulled separately. Okay. So, may I get a motion in a second to approve items? One, two, three, four, seventeen, eighteen, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. Yes. Can I have a motion? All right, a second? Can I have a second?
So move.
All right. It has been rightfully approved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right, the motion passes. Okay. Let's hear, may I get a motion in a second to consider action item number five?
Motion Sullivan.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Perfect.
Madam Chair, I'm going to ask Jennifer Mott to, Jennifer Mott met with the Audit Finance Committee, but she has a brief presentation. Then we'll turn this over to trustee Sullivan when she's finished. So, Jennifer, if you would.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. So, this is, this agenda item is regarding our fiscal year 2020 comprehensive annual financial report. We did complete this report per the normal schedule this past fall and issued it. However, we have now found a significant error in it and need to reissue the financial reports. And this was presented to the Audit and Finance Committee last, this past Thursday, a week ago. So, if we could go to the next slide, please. Just a few things I want to go through is first, the cause of the reissuance itself. And then after that, I want them to run through the financial statements, just, just to show how this reissuance has changes, has changed the financial outcomes. Next slide, please. So, the reissuance. This is a result of an error in our calculations of other post-employment benefits. So, these are benefits other than pensions, such as healthcare, dental plans for retirees. So, the expense that we recognized in the income statement was overstated by eighty-three million dollars for these other post-employment benefits. This is a non-cash expense. It is us recognizing expense for benefits that we have promised in the future. But so that calculation, a lot of that occurred because this is a relatively new requirement for reporting other post-employment benefits. It just started back in two thousand and eighteen. And as we discovered this, this year, there's still elements of the calculation that we needed a more in-depth appreciation of. So, that's what occurred. Obviously, eighty-three million dollar overstatement in expenses is significant, hence this reissuance. So, here, this, of course, shows that this is a material weakness in our financial reporting. So, we have the corrective action plan for us to make sure that there is additional guidance and training, in particular, on this other post-employment benefits, financial reporting. We also have made sure that internally now, we have a workbook that has been fully vetted to calculate these required entries. So, there, there should not, there will not be errors like this in the future. And then, and just in general, we're going to increase the amount of training that the financial reporting area receives, in particular, when there are new reporting requirements. So, that's regarding the reissuance. And then here, now, just want to go through how this has changed the financial results for fiscal year 2020. We started the year on our balance sheet, August thirty-first, twenty nineteen, with a net position of two hundred and eighteen million. When we first released these financials this past fall, because of this eighty-three million dollar expense, we thought we had a negative net income of eighty million. So, this correction does now mean that our net income for fiscal year 2020 was positive four million. So, we did see an improvement in our net position from two hundred and eighteen million to two hundred and twenty-two million. Next slide, please. Here, this shows just the additional detail in the income statement where this correction needed to be made. You can see that correction is in the operating expenses. Because as I mentioned, this was an overstatement of our expenses, non-cash expenses related to other post-employment benefits. So, this again did change our net income instead of being negative eighty million. You can see here, it was negative seventy-nine point one million. Instead, the corrected amount in this reissuance is a positive net income of three point nine million. And that compares to in twenty nineteen, our net income was twenty-six point six million. Next slide, please. So, I did not go through some of the remaining income statements, in particular, the cash flow statement. Because like I said, this was a non-cash expense, so there was no change to the cash flow statement in our financial reports. Thank you very much. And like I said, this was presented to the Audit and Finance Committee last Thursday.
Thank you, Jennifer. Trustee Sullivan?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I just want to follow Ms. Mott's comments. She laid it out very well. And to tell the other trustees on the board that the Audit and Finance Committee met, who attended that meeting, and it's on the Audit and Finance Committee or trustees vote, and trustee Ayers Wilson. So, it was a, an interactive meeting. There were a lot of questions. Trustee vote had a lot of questions. Trustee Ayers Wilson had a lot of questions. We spent a lot of time. It was not rushed. We dug deep. And we asked, I think, some tough questions. And the, in the end, very positive, good note, there's no negative financial impact with this agenda item. Luckily, the error occurred on the side of being positive for us, and for that, we're all grateful. So, I'd just like to see if trustee voter, trustee Ayers Wilson have any additional comments. Otherwise, I will be making a motion that the board accept this modified report. Okay, hearing done, I'll make a motion that the board accept this modified report.
Second. Thank you, trustee. Good. All those in favor, item number five?
Aye.
Can I abstain? Ayers Wilson abstaining.
Let the record show that trustee Ayers Wilson and trustee Pierce, yes, are abstaining. Perfect. A motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Sullivan. Now would be, let's see, items number six through, bear with me. Six through sixteen. All right, may I get a motion and a second to consider those items? So move.
Second.
Has been moved improperly second. Thank you very much. Dr. Head or Jennifer?
Yeah, well, we had, just on all these items. These are early colleges or dual-credit arrangements, and I'm going to let Jennifer talk, but, so when you, sometimes when we have startup costs on some of these new programs, there, there are costs associated with it upfront. For example, we might have equipment cost or faculty cost. But we receive the money and contact our reimbursements. We do not go into these programs thinking that we're going to be losing money. There has to be some reason to do that, some justification, which we would explain to you. So, it's usually two years after the fact when we receive the money. Jennifer, do you want to have any, you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I do want to comment that, so for each of these, we do an analysis for them. We have estimated costs and estimated revenues, both from tuition and state reimbursements. The state reimbursement is a key piece in that there is always about a two-year lag in receiving that reimbursement. So, especially when we are starting a new program in, initially, in the first year, sometimes two years. Yes, not all of the costs are being covered because that reimbursement comes two years later. But we do estimate that coming in two years later in the analyses. This also might occur when a program is growing substantially, where the expenses grow first, and then again, that same cause, that reimbursement being delayed by those two years. If there's a significant growth in the number of students, then you might have a year or two where those revenues and expenses do not fully line up. But like I said, we do review each of these and make sure that each is financially sustainable.
Thank you. Trustees, any comments on those particular action items? Trustee? Vote? I think it's you, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I had a question. Some of these entities were making such as, I've got up here the Coventry Preparatory School for Dual Credit. Is where is that located? And I, I couldn't, with the information given and the fiscal impact, I couldn't figure out the the net. Unless, unless the where we, where we state there student tuition. And there's, and there's no, no reference to state reimbursement? Am I missing something here on this one?
So, on this one, for example, it mentions that this is the first year of the program. So, that we're anticipating enrollment of students for the first year. And then the last sentence of the fiscal impact states that these enrollments will generate contact hours in a future state's, in the future allocation.
And how many hours does a student normally take in a semester?
For dual credit, you're talking?
Yes.
I don't see three or six. I don't see three or six normally. For most of the dual credit students, it's probably it probably three and a half or four and a half or something like that. If you took all the numbers, some take three, one course, some take two. And Coventry, by the way, is in Kingwood.
Okay.
We, I see, I mean, I understand your question. We've got so many of these. I bet we have forty or fifty of these arrangements on dual credit. So we can add a little more information in there if we have it, but in this particular case, we'll know ahead of time, we don't really know how many students are going to be enrolled. After the fact, we can tell you what the finances look like, if that if that makes, just because the way they do the contact hour reimbursement. Actually, we don't have to wait two years. We would know. Even though the money's not on hand, we could tell you what the money is going to look like after we know what the enrollments are. But most of these, as Jennifer pointed out, we do we're not in this to lose money. We don't have to make money off of it, but that's not what, that's not our goal. But we do a financial plan on all these dual credit arrangements, just to make sure we know what we're what we're talking about. We don't, we do not engage in something over the long term, it's going to cost us. We do not want to lose money on this, put it that way.
And is there a difference between is there a difference in our revenue between some entity that's within our taxing district as opposed to outside of our taxing district?
No, no, there's not on our dual credit arrangements and so the way the state is, the way the state guidelines are, and the way we operate, we take dual credit students from outside of our service area. And that tuition is waived, where again, where we pick up the money on this and the reimbursement. By the way, we 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 have a positive cash flow on all the dual credits. Keep in mind that we've got nineteen thousand students on dual credit, so this is just a small piece of what we're doing here. So we charge the same for in district and out of district, and that's by design. Now, if they come in and take credit classes after dual credit, then they pay out-of-district fees. So we're trying to get as many students in. A lot of these, by the way, are going to be online programs. Or they're being taught at the school, one of the two. They're not taught here necessarily. Some of them are, and some of them are not.
But they can't, they can take classes at our campuses?
Yes, and dual credit, if if it's dual credit, they can. If they're coming out of dual credit, then then they're going to pay the regular fees if they're not part of the dual credit program. But they they would, it depends on what age they are, right? If they're still in high school, if they're a junior or senior, they're not going to be taking these college-level classes outside of dual credit normally, because they're not eligible to come in. We can give you an overall report over the dual credit, if that helps, and break this down a bit, where just so you can see the overall scope of this. We could do that in one of our next meetings.
And I can see we're in the in the first one year or two years before state
Right.
compensation comes into play, that we would we would be a negative as far as
Yeah.
There'd be some some net cost to us, but
Right.
I think that's 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 all right, but.
Well, again, it's easier for us if we could wait until September when school starts. Either maybe September or October, once we have all the numbers, then we can come back in with a report on the board to show you what the dual credit and how that how that how that impacts us financially, just so you can see what those what those guidelines are. We go ahead.
I was going to ask if any of these entities were contracting with private?
Yes, most of these, I think. I think
Private nonprofit?
Private nonprofit. I don't know. I can't, I don't know about private nonprofit. It, I need your definition of private nonprofit. We can break this down on a dual credit report. Like I said, it'd probably be first of October. So I mean, if it's a church school, for example, or if the church is running it, which they could, let's just say, I don't know about covenant, but it depends on what you call nonprofit, they're still got, I mean, they're covering their cost when they charge dollars for it. So I can give you a good example here locally. So we have dual credit arrangements with the Woodland Christian Academy. And that's I'm not sure that's a whether that would qualify as nonprofit. I mean, you know, they they're, the tuition fees are pretty high there, but it's a private school like any other, the other private schools around, so.
If if they're nonprofit, but in the district, they don't pay property tax, which is a basis of a large part of our budget.
Well, they wouldn't, but neither would a high school. So the parents, though, would, right?
Yeah.
So I mean, anybody anybody we do in business with, these schools, they're not paying property taxes, so.
Yeah.
And if I do, to be fair about it, are from the ISDs. These are, I mean, we're seeing a proliferation of private schools and charter schools. So if they're registered by the state and they're a charter school, for example, then they get state reimbursement, just like the ISDs do.
Okay.
So be glad to get you more information, but it'll just, if we can, again, wait for a couple of months, let us get all the numbers in. Then we can just kind of give you what what the fall looks like in a in a broader report, so we can break this down by public charter, private, just so you'll see.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Thank you, trustee vote.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of items six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you so much.
I mean, Sullivan, I'll say one thing.
Sure.
If this looks like it's complicated, trustee vote, it is, because it is. It is, we have people, we have people assigned to work on these dual credit arrangements. These are legal contracts that we have and agreements that we have with all these entities. So there's a lot of work that goes into this, and it's just because of the way the state operates, and that's that's fine. We do it with everything, but it's not, it's not easy to understand unless you're in the middle of it, so.
I understand that.
I was a dual credit student, so from from Alding, Nippon School District. All right, so number nineteen. May I get a motion and a second to consider action item nineteen? I move. Right, it's been moved improperly second. Trustee Pierce.
I just, I don't want to really discuss it. I just wanted the item pulled so we could vote on it separately.
Yes, ma'am, we are, the item is being polled.
Okay. I don't have any questions. We can, we can
No questions?
No.
Okay. All those in favor of action item nineteen?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Pierce, no.
Trustee Ayers Wilson abstain.
Okay, one second. Trustee Ayers Wilson, you abstain?
Yes, please.
And trustee Pierce?
No.
You oppose?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, got it. All right, it's been moved improperly second. Let the record show that trustee Ayers Wilson abstains and trustee Pierce opposes, action item number nineteen. But motion passes, thank you. Hope I'm saying this correctly. If not, please feel free to let me know. May I get a motion and a second for action item number twenty-one?
Motion Sullivan.
Second. Okay, it's been moved improperly second. Trustee Sullivan?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Jennifer, I apologize for asking questions today. I should have contacted you before the meeting. But in reading the backup and the rationale on this agenda item and under under the section titled rationale, the last sentence says WEX guarantees a point zero five per gallon rebate, which I can understand, for a return of approximately point zero one five to the college that I do not understand. Can you take a shot at answering that for me and tell me what that means? And if not, you can get with me later. I'm going to vote for the item anyway, but I just wanted to understand the math on that.
Yeah, sorry, I think yeah, looking at the wording, and if you look at the backup, I think maybe we're just mistakenly conflating two things. There's a rebate, but then there's also savings on a waiving a transaction fee. The transaction fee is what's point one five from the other option, and in this case of WEX, that transaction fee is waived. And then there is also the rebate. So I think we unfortunately perhaps had forewording combining two separate things.
Well, the numbers don't match to me. Point zero one five to me is not the same as point one five. Says WEX guarantees a point zero five per gallon rebate for a return of approximately point zero one five to the college. Is that a typo?
I would need to go confirm that then. My apologies if that is confusing. I can see that.
Okay. I don't know what your preference or Dr. Head's preference is, if you want to pull it or if we disapprove it, not knowing what we're approving. I'm at a loss, but I do have a very genuine question, but not not so much a concern. Dr. Head, will chime in? Give us some guidance here.
Jennifer, is it? I mean, I see what they're talking about is that this is not a critical item right now, right? If we bring this back in.
Yeah, we can bring it back in August.
Okay, we'll bring it back in.
If I could interject, since we've already had a motion and a second on the item, in order to move it to the next agenda, we would need a motion to postpone.
Okay, can I have a motion to postpone action item number twenty-one?
Motion postponed Sullivan.
A second?
Second. Vote.
Perfect, it's been moved improperly second. So action item twenty-one will be postponed for the
I'm sorry, we'll need to vote on the motion to postpone as well.
Sorry, Melissa, yes.
That's fine.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes. So action item twenty-one would be set for the next board meeting in August, correct?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Yes, okay. All right, let's move forward to action item number twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-six. So can I get a motion in a second? A second?
Ayers Wilson.
All right, thank you. It's been moved improperly second. Dr. Head, I think, or?
Yeah, I just want to give the board a very, I want to, we wanted to make you aware now that what we're talking about is at the separation incentive plan. Hundred and forty-four people signed up for it. And we will our savings over a five-year period will be five million dollars. And I just want to remind you, this is the third or fourth time we've had this before the board. So if the board approves this, then we'll send out notifications to the impacted employees and move forward with this immediately. And that's all I had, just a reminder of what it was.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Head. All those in favor of action item number twenty-six?
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed?
Madam Chair, trustee Good abstains.
Let the record show that trustee Good abstains from action item number twenty-six. Thank you, trustee Good. Motion passes. Okay. Can I have a motion in a second for action item number twenty-seven?
Motion Sullivan.
Second.
I think you, it's been moved improperly second. Dr. Head, I think.
Jennifer, do you want to give a very brief update for the for the trustees that have not been involved with this before?
Yes, sorry, I'm switching to my item here. Okay, so for the prevailing wage rate, yes, so this is the college recommending what prevailing wage rates we follow. And so in this case, right, for federally funded projects, the recommendation is to use the US Department of Labor prevailing wage rates. And then for non-federally funded projects under that fall under to Texas prevailing wage statute, there we recommend using local market surveys that we that the statute allows us to use. And there we have a process, there's a chancellor's procedure in place that also allows for us checking that these wage rates are being followed in our contracts.
This is thanks to trustee Stoma, this is the issue that came up, what, fifteen or eighteen months ago before COVID? And so we approved that policy for a year, and then we're proving it again, so.
Right.
What question, Chair Saldivar?
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Head. You said it approved it a year. Would this come back to us any year? Is there a recurring item? Or can we vote to extend it a longer period of time?
Jennifer, I was looking at the wording over this. We had, we talked about this in the meeting while we were coming back. So the wages are being approved from twenty-one to twenty-two, from September one, twenty-one to twenty-two. So the only way around that is to change, in other words, the wages change every year, right? So we would come back in based on the information that we're getting. So the answer right now is yes, it would come in every year, unless next year, we just say going forward that whatever the prevailing wage rates are that we receive from these agencies. Does that make sense? You're approving?
It does, yeah, yeah, it makes a lot of sense. So it's either approve it every year or or modify it next year, and that's a good idea. Thank you. That answered my question.
Okay.
Yeah, the the cross, the procedure does have us reviewing annually, because from year to year, we could switch, for example, the a non-federally funded project, we could switch to Department of Labor instead of local market surveys. So it is us wanting to make sure we review this each year.
Okay. Sounds great. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, trustee Sullivan. Any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of action item number twenty-seven?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. All right. Can I have a, can I get a motion in a second for action item number twenty-nine?
Motion Sullivan.
Second.
Second.
All right, it's been moved improperly second. Thank you, trustee Pierce.
I not want any discussion, just wanted to have a separate vote. No discussion.
No discussion, okay. All those in favor of action item number twenty-nine?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Trustee Pierce abstain.
Ayers Wilson abstain as well.
Okay, let the record show that trustee Ayers Wilson and trustee Pierce abstains from action item number twenty-nine. Thank you, the motion passes. Can I get a motion in a second for action item number thirty?
Motion Sullivan.
Second, Pierce.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved improperly second. Trustee Pierce?
No discussion, just a vote.
Okay. All those in favor of action item number thirty?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce abstains.
Ayers Wilson abstain as well.
Okay, motion passes, but please let the record know that trustee Pierce and trustee Ayers Wilson abstains from action item number thirty. Thank you. All right, that's it. Okay, good job everyone.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And trustee, trustee Pierce, and this is, this is a question that perhaps Melissa might ask, in the future, can a particular trustee, just once we have that action item, can they vote, you know, abstain from voting, or vote, or don't vote for it without taking the action item out? How would that work?
Not, not without you, not without pulling it from the consent agenda unless that board member wanted to abstain from approving the consent agenda as a whole.
Okay, got it, thank you.
So what are you saying, Melissa, explain that to me in lay terms?
Sure, if you wanted to abstain from voting on one item listed on the consent agenda, but did not want to abstain from the remainder of the items on the consent, consent agenda, you would have to pull it and vote separately as you did today.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
Okay, thank you, Melissa.
You're welcome.
Where are we next?
Financial reports.
Financial reports, thank you sir. Jennifer, are we ready to connect?
Yes, there we go, thank you, I have for you here today the monthly financial report for the month ended April 30th. If we could go to the next slide, please. So here showing our actual revenues compared to budget, here so far, we have 334 million in actual revenues collected, which is 88.4% of the budgeted amount, and you can see that we continue to trend well above prior years where collections had been at this same point in time, next slide, please. So on the expenditure side of the budget, here we have actual expenditures as of April 30th of 222 million, which is just shy of 60% of the budget that was approved by the Board of Trustees. So here, this shows that as we continued, as we have continued the hiring freeze, and other just general, being watchful of our spending, you can see that our spending compared to prior years at the same point in time is below where it was as a percentage of the budget. Next slide, please. So in the revenues, we are forecasting for the end of the year a positive 6.1 million variance, and this does continue to be primarily a result of the credit hours, while still negative, being significantly better than what we budgeted, we had budgeted for a 10% decline in credit hours, and so far for the fall and spring terms, we have had a 4% decline, so as I mentioned, still a decline in credit hours, but it is better than what we budgeted for, resulting in a positive variance. Next slide, please. And then on the expenditure side, we are also forecasting 7.6 million in lower expenditures, the bulk of this comes from the COVID contingency that we had budgeted for, but now that we have received significant COVID federal stimulus funds, we have not need to, needed to use the majority of that contingency amount. Next slide, please. Yep, so that concludes the monthly financial, yes.
Jennifer, so if you could just kind of summarize, like we're 13 million to the better of what we originally planned, let's put it that way, is that correct?
Yes, yes, because revenues are about 6 million better, and expenditures are 7 million below what was budgeted, so yes, that is about a 13 million overall net positive compared to budget. Yeah, so that concludes the financial report, and then everyone also has the building and grounds report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer, good presentation. The next action item is, I'm sorry, the next one is suggested future agenda items, I just want to allocate this time, because I think Helen wanted to say a few words, so Helen, you have the floor.
Yeah, I was supposed to introduce her, but because I promised her that I would.
Go ahead, Dr. Head.
If he could keep her emotions together, but I, I want to echo what John said earlier, I did not know he was going to say that, I appreciate, if John's still listening, I appreciate you saying that, because Helen's been, you know, when I came in, Helen was here, and I thought so highly of her myself, when I was at North Here's before I became the chancellor, that I wanted her to stay, she's been the glue that holds this place together up here, she really is. I'll, I'll tell you, I think if, for Helen, I think if there's a conscience of the organization, it's been her, because when we talk about decisions, and whether they be compensation increases, or just major decisions that we might have, I've talked to Helen, because Helen has a, not only does she have an excellent relationship with our administrators, but with the faculty senate, with the AFT, with the Professional Support Staff Association, Helen's the contact for all of that. You know, Desiree's going to have some big shoes to fill, but, and Helen is one of the most decent people you're going to meet, I don't, I don't think she's got a mean bony, a, a mean bone in her body, so. So Helen, if you can hold it together, you can say a few words, and you might tell them what you're going to be doing, by the way.
Okay, great, Chair Saldivar, trustees, chancellor head, chancellor's cabinet, colleagues, PSSA, faculty senate presidents, and John Bergduff, thank you so much for those kind words, I didn't expect it, and means a lot to me, you know, when I started my higher ed career a long time ago in Massachusetts, if you had told me that I would end up in Texas to end my career, and that it would be the best job I ever had, I wouldn't have believed you, and I don't think any of my family would have believed you either, they are all still in Boston, but it has been an extraordinary, extraordinary experience here, when I travel nationally and see the reputation that we have, when I go to HEB, when you're just talking to people in the dentist's office, and they say something about, oh, you work at Lone Star, I love Lone Star, and they start talking about their experience here, seeing Katie present our Jack Kent Cooke scholars earlier today, I think I saw that video six or eight times while we were previewing, and I cried every single time, because that's what we do, we change lives, and to be part of that is an honor and a privilege, and I'm trying to hold it together here, thank you, Dr. Head, but no, this has been an extraordinary experience, I will miss you all. And you are in such great hands with Desiree, she is world-class, she's smart, and she has amazing analytical skills, and you're going to love working with her, so I just feel so grateful and humbled, or humbled as we say here, to have worked here, and I thank you all for your support, it's been amazing, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Colleagues, any comments?
Yes, Madam Chair, this is trustee Pierce, Helen, let me tell you, you're one of the most gracious, I mean, the most gracious ladies I've ever met, now I don't say that, I don't give out compliments that easily, but you are truly a gracious soul, I, I don't, you're kind, I, I can't, I don't know anything negative to say about you, I'm like, Dr. Head, do, do you have a mean bone in your body, if you do, it's well hidden, but kudos to you, you are very gracious, even to be a New Englander, you are very gracious.
Go Red Sox, but thank you, ma'am.
That's the only thing bad I can say about her, by the way, is that she's a Red Sox fan, that's, yeah, that's the only bad thing I can say.
My grandmother was a Red Sox fan, my mother was a Red Sox fan, I'm a Red Sox fan, my niece is a Red Sox fan.
Oh, good for you, Helen.
Trustee, I think I hear, yes.
David vote here, Helen, I want to say, I want to tell you how wonderful it's been working with you all the years that you've been with Lone Star, and I really appreciate all the help you've given me over the years in my way, and and thank you so much for all that you've done for this, for the district, and for me personally.
Thank you, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Let us know what's, what's going on in your life as you go forward, eh?
Yeah, Dr. Head asked me to share that, Terry retired last year, and we will be, we're in the process of selling our house, and we will be heading to the great state of Maine on June 28th, and staying there for the summer, and then we will head back and be staying in Florida for the winter.
Oh.
Snowbird cliches.
Wow. Trustee Good?
Thank you, Helen, the first time you and I met, I was decked out in full campaign gear, I was dropping off a campaign finance report for my first election campaign, you were gracious then, you've been gracious every single time I've interacted with you, it has been a pleasure and an honor to work with you, thank you so much for everything you've done for all of the trustees throughout your entire tenure, every time I eat a lobster roll, I'm going to think of you.
I will think of you all, lobster folks, who we've traveled together, thank you.
Any other colleagues?
Yeah, trustee, I mean Chair Saldivar, if I may, Mike Sullivan?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Helen, I've had the unique opportunity to work with you in three different roles now, one as a community member in Kingwood, two as the tax assessor, collector, voter registrar, and three as a trustee, and I'm going to tell you at each one of those, it's been a pleasure working with you, as a community member, you treated me with respect, as the tax assessor, collector, voter registrar, worked with you on mapping and redrawing districts, and working through the single-member district transition, you were great to our team, you might remember J.R. Harris, he enjoyed working with you as well, and of course, now as a trustee, just, there are no words, but anyway, thank you, I want you to know that you've been extraordinarily professional and helpful to me throughout my career, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, colleagues?
Can I go next?
Yes, trustee Maria.
Well, I, I talked to Helen, and so, you know, expressed my deep appreciation for her role, for her being there for especially new members as we come in, so I'm not going to go, I'm not, I'm not going to, you know, reiterate everything, because she knows how I feel, and she knows, which is very, quite appreciated, the only thing I'm going to say is, Dr. Head, if, before she leaves, can, you know, figure out a way, bottle whatever she is, somehow she managed to do it all somehow, she played a different, toured a lot of different hats, and the secret to success is exactly what everybody's been mentioning, you know, she's just got that personality, that, that dedication, you know, hard work, everything, so I'm clearly going to miss you, and as, you know, I know you're, you like to birth Boston best dogs, and, and you're not going to be in Texas, but you're Texas in our minds, and in our hearts, and, and it sounds better than being a maniac, is that what you all are?
And I won't tell you what they call people from Massachusetts.
Okay, so anyway, wish you the best, and, and thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you.
All right, Helen, I just want to say thank you so much, you have been very wonderful to all of us, to me, you've been very patient, and a lot of questions that I've asked, and so I honestly, I'm going to miss you a lot, I mean, you were sort of like, you know, you were staple for the college, for the system, and so, and actually for us, so I don't want you to leave, but I know that you, you know, you want to retire, so I just wish you the best of luck, I know you're going to have so much, so much fun, and so we, we, well, I don't know what to say, I mean, we're really going to miss you, I'm going to miss you, Helen, so.
I am going to miss you.
Madam Chair, this is trustee Kane, if I may?
Yes, trustee Kane.
Helen, so, I'm new to the board, and we have only known each other for a short period of time, I just want to thank you for all of the assistance that you've given me, answering my questions, it's been invaluable to me to be able to interact with you, and I certainly wish you and your husband the very best in the years ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Helen, we, we will miss you, we'll miss you dearly, for sure.
I will miss you all, thank you.
And we look forward to working with Desiree, so if you're, you're hearing us, we're, we look forward to working you, Desiree.
Desiree's in my office, as we speak, so you're going to love working with her.
All right, thank you, Helen.
Thank you.
All right, any other future agenda items, trustees, for our next meeting? Right, hearing none, it is 3:26 PM, and let's adjourn. Thank you for joining us, thank you, bye.
Thank you, great job, everybody, thank you, Chair Sullivan.
Aye.
Thank you.
See you later soon, have a good summer.
Thank you.